Or also that's bring Gordon back to her and more time until she's done.
The flag for fire.
Yeah, but it's. I don't know what people have been doing.
I'm not saying George.
Well, don't like one. Chief.
I don't know. I've heard of a check line.
You're fine.
Yep.
What do you do with your dad?
Yeah.
His phone's just sitting there.
All right, six o'clock, so I recall this meeting to order. Uh, first item on our agenda is public comment. Do I have anybody here from the public that would like to comment? Seeing done, I will close public comment. And we will go jump right into item C, which is continuing discussion and update steps regarding curbside recycling program. Who's handling that one? See, great. Tell us where we're at.
All right, next step. So we've talked about this a couple of times. Uh, for this meeting. We're looking for the code amendments. So our first.
Yes.
Section, um. Once we made some red line edits, I don't know if you guys have any comments or questions on on the code changes in there. One question I have for you is, do you want to set a limit on number four teams?
I thought five was reasonable.
What if the name were garbage?
I cannot, doesn't look like anybody's gonna need five here.
He's at half door right now.
So they get off more garbage.
The dumpster.
Wow.
You can't actually have dumpster in a neighborhood.
Yeah, you can.
And that's also the thing.
Oh, no, it's just that.
Alright, so what any other?
Okay, so go ahead. So on the next, next section. Uh, pricing will work with problems in ways. I'm giving that a contract again of the next work session. Uh, we talked about the price range in three fifty to four dollars per can. Uh, we did decide that we're gonna do that for every household in in the city. Minus apartments and professional businesses. Uh, has the price in there all very estimated cost because a lot of on the. On the plan. Next section, the big biggest part of this whole discussion is the the advertising, advertisement and. Uh, campaign materials. So. Karen put this together, she did a great job. Not gonna go through it in a lot of detail, but. It gives you kind of an idea of what we want to do over the next couple of months as far as notifying the public. That this is coming. Um, postcard is one. And that is funded by the grant. Uh, utility bill in March and April. We'll come to break through our questions, um, and some recycling materials that will go out. Both in the utility bill and then we'll also attach them to the cans. We actually are gonna have, which is our rubbish, uh, cans, my company. Deliver all the cans for us, hang the materials, and put the sticker on the can. All in one shot, so.
I do know that, um. Nathan volunteered, uh, to have people help us or interest in that. Um, from the district, you mentioned that was a possibility to about. I don't know if that would help offset some costs, but that was an option as well. Don't don't know if they want that or not, if it's just, if they're doing the same, it might be more.
Yeah, and we've 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 talked internally about possibility of us doing ourselves. Um, the nice thing with re-reading is they can do this in probably seven to ten days. So, um, plan is the first of April, have those plans here right off this, right off the truck. From April through July, we plan to put it in the in the newsletter every month, just to speak to people or perhaps when they have questions. Any questions on that? Check, keep that with, those are the big ones for this time. So next, next meeting will include the code changes. And then the work session will bring the denim for the two weeks. We're on track this place.
Good point, so Jordan, you did a good job with this. Followed this all the way through. Very nice.
Hey, uh, I I know the staff of them wants to work, so I don't think I take any credit for that, but. But, um, a couple of things I do wanna. In the code itself. Um, we're actually putting the table. Do we wanna just reference the table as opposed to, I I I worried about putting it in there because it's gonna be out of date next year. And it's just gonna be a maintenance process.
Yeah, we can take the table out and just reference. That's what I would recommend.
Um, and then, uh, let's see, there was a couple. Um, I wanna talk about green waste, so that's also a call of recycling. Um, as we're doing this, I'd like to do a big push for green waste for two reasons. Um. Number one. Uh, on a. Cost, because we we all know that as we recycle, we are actually getting a rebate back from. The district, not only on cans, but, um, the more, the more tonnage we offset. They give us money back. So right now there's, uh, they raised the rate and then they give some of that money back depending on how much we divert. Um, that's done by tonnage. So recycling absolutely needs to be done as soon as possible. But as a city from a financial standpoint. Um, a. A green can full of grass clippings weighs more than a blue can full of cardboard. So if we are trying to get a better deal for our residents. It would prove us to while we're in this. To push the green can as well. And not only does it offset a lot more space, volume from the landfill. I mean, recyclables do compress and they do decompose instead of green waste, but green waste takes up a lot of space. Grass clippings fill up the landfill fast. Um, so if we can push that at the same time as we're looking at second can pricing. Um, the the district mentioned today in our meeting that they found the sweet spot. Is the second black can. Should be three to four dollars more. Than a green can. So as we're looking.
A lot of our green.
Yeah, people are throwing, you know, and spring's coming up, we're gonna be doing tree pruning. Um, grass clippings, all whatever weeds, all clean up. Yeah, so we we want to incentivize as much as possible. Um, the the opportunity to get a green can instead of a second black can. It should be a much better deal to get that green can. So as we're looking at pricing. Um, for that second black can, just keep that in mind. And like I said, it will actually be a better deal for both the city and the resident because it'll offset the costs. Of us dropping.
You think he got green can in the winter time as a black can, correct?
Uh, right now it's November to February. Um, they are with with the change in the past three to four years. Um, they're actually trying to push that and make it December to February. Because other than you guys, but I was still mowing my lawn in in November last year. Because it didn't snow, well. I mainly it's getting, it's been the leaves off the grass. You don't have to do that or I have to rake. The lawn is pretty easier.
The whole scum comes spring.
That's right.
Oh, it is December first.
Oh, it is December first? Oh, so nevermind, we'll be aligned with their new policy then. Um, I haven't got a plan on the green can. But, um. I, that's my recommendation. But, well done. I I actually got a lot of comments from the staff that, um, lots of integrated. What a great job our staff been putting together this package, so. Who does?
A lot of that is what Karen, that we've been working with.
But she's on top of it, you guys on the.
Hey. Moving on, our next item is, uh, we've got several planning items. Item number one is, uh, planning commission recommendation. This is an application from the Arts Academy to do the property next of them as PRD. Considering they have such green spaces. Associated with the UOL, this is really kind of a great trade off. Um. Does anybody have any questions and suggestions on this one? I think we've seen it before when we did the land trade.
So this does not meet the zoning requirements for PRD, correct? Because they don't know on the touch button road?
That's correct. There's a development.
So why are we not just doing an R two? For PRD?
Uh, well. Yeah, we've we've discussed this a little bit. That's okay. Um, the mainly lot size. Uh, so if you look to the south, the. The lot widths and the product type of thing build it will be a good set, you know, sell well. And be consistent is why they're going for the PRD. The R two would be much larger than the lot sizes itself. Uh, I can't speak to all of the things that developers considering why they can't just do an R two. But I I believe that we, um. You're representing with Sheldon, right? I believe we have the developer, you wanted to.
It doesn't mean much when we went through this on paper. Uh. And it seems like a fair trade considering we're giving a school as the majority of the P R D.
Yeah, the big difference between R two and a PRD is PRD does, is required to have open space. R two does not. One thing that they're they're offering with this PRD is a trail for the city. They're also offering a widened sidewalk and a wide park strip. That would not be required with the R two.
I feel like that alone, especially where this is at.
And and.
And yeah, there's.
I was just curious.
That makes sense for you.
That's a good question.
So no further questions, we'll move that one on for votes. Is everybody okay to put that on the set agenda? I have number two recommendation from the planning commission application for zone change or property located places twenty five plus. Simple and itself. Uh, from R one professional office, we've talked about this one a few times as well. Um. Anybody have any questions on this? Uh, their question that was left with us the last time we had this was, uh, are they planning on doing two story and that was. Uh, that that they did plan on it and it's required, but they just plan on.
Yeah, as far as the reason, we won't know what type of building it is until they, I mean, with the site plan. But we're left with the allowed and permitted uses in the special one, so.
Instead of agenda.
Yeah, that was, that was very weird with that stat. I was like, what are we, what now?
Uh, to property located at eleven eighty five south. Avenue one to residential R two applicant Jacob Jones. Let's go over to that one.
Yeah, I thought very well to the next one.
Yeah, we're flying through these. Good job, guys. Okay, uh, next one is A one to R two. The planning commission recommended approval with some conditions and the condition was that they amend their. Their, uh, property lines to be consistent with the requested zoning. The applicant, uh, has provided, uh, proof that he's done that now.
Very.
Then this was.
Everyone in this packet is all the words, so weird.
So so Wilcox Meadows. Is front Estill Residential.
Yep, and that's a detention basin.
Oh, that's a detention.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That makes a little more sense.
Okay, and then we have this one that they're just subdividing and to add additional.
I mean, that's the goal in the future. This, of course, wouldn't subdivide anything, but they would like to create a couple. Two or maybe, I don't know how many, probably two or three new lots that would base twelve hundred south. So I think, I believe he's completing a trade with the. The adjacent property owner so that they have.
What, the detention basin or the?
Uh, no.
No.
Jog into that. Yeah. Describe the. The the frontage property in twelve hundred south, they're trading so that yes, we get squared off. I believe the applicant's in. We didn't even study him for the law yet.
Yes, yes, I'm I'm here if you have any further questions or if it's muddy, I can explain.
It's just a table discussion today. I think this is a little wild, but.
I have questions now, but yeah, I would like, I would like, can you explain?
Like, how how can you subdivide this?
This is weird to me because of the weird sizes.
Absolutely. So we actually own the detention basin now. Um, and so the the idea is. The kind of skinny corner of the triangle isn't being utilized to hold any water. So we could, uh, in theory, add one lot kind of at the very. Uh, I guess east end, if that makes sense, so, um. But there is, there is kind of eighty foot, eighty feet of frontage that wouldn't inhibit the. The detention basin. And then the idea is maybe if we wanted to reshape. We haven't even talked about resizing, but just simply reshape, kind of make the detention basin more of a square instead of a triangle. And maybe we could get an additional lot there too. So, um, so it looks weird when you, when you just have this, uh, parcel that we're rezoning outlined. But when you look at the whole thing, it's kind of like a, you know, it's a a straight squared off, uh, leg, if that makes sense.
And then it's R two across the street.
Yep.
My.
Yeah.
It seems like if there's multiple steps, I'd rather do it in one step. I don't, I mean.
I agree with that. I mean, if we can, because right now that, um, detention basin is still what?
It's a, it's also R two. Yeah.
But it changes property lines, not to subdivide, so if you look at page fifty five, the fact that there's. Then shows what this is only.
So.
It isn't colored.
No, I'm sorry. Oh. But now I can see it over here.
I thought you loved that tablet though.
I do, but I love that.
And so my point is, is I think that we are doing this in one step and what's happening. I'm not able to see the action. I don't.
What would be the second step?
Well, they're gonna have to, if they now own the the property line and they intend to subdivide it for housing. It's certain, uh, staff looking to subdivide property correctly for multiple lots.
And that all those lots will still be on two. I I don't see how that changes anything. It's it's the land area itself.
True, I'm trying to say, so. Okay, I can go with you there.
Yeah, but I don't, if they want to rezone it R two, they can figure out.
That's fine, yeah. I I have no problem with this.
There's currently, uh, courses on this property. They know what happens next, right? Yeah, good, okay.
But I mean, they're the landowners and they 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 could go versus whether they. Rezone it to R two or not.
No, I meant, it what happens after the, yeah. Because I'm sure it can seem like.
Alright, move on to the next meeting. Time for discussion regarding potential. To create a light bit commercial industrial zone in Syracuse.
Like light commercial industrial or just like?
Light, commercial, industrial.
No industrial, just like. Okay, that's what I understood.
Where did I, okay. Alright. Light, commercial. Go ahead.
So, uh. You have requested a draft light commercial zone, which we have, uh, made an attempt, placed it in the packet. Uh, there's a table there. Uh, in the end of there and it has a whole long list of potential uses.
I do not like the way that this has been formatted at all. I think that we should abolish the table and restrict specific. Uh. Concerns.
So if you look at the table, there is a, a prohibited. And the idea is that this is just a work in, this wouldn't be in the final ordinance, I wouldn't anticipate. I I, this is a tool for us to discuss what. Should and should not be allowed.
The the reason why I I would do it differently is. Let's say that one of our concerns is noise. Some of these particular things may be on the checked no box because it's assumed it would be noisy. However, if someone comes in and sees that the restriction is noise. And they have another way to get away or to get away with that, or maybe. Technology in that industry changes and it's no longer a noisy industry. Um, one example of that is there are people who claim that, uh, car washes no longer have the same noise. There's a quiet version of a car wash. If that's the case, then if somebody's found a way to alleviate the problem. But in a table that says you can't have this business, you're still eliminating that business. So my.
I mean, I've never seen it, heard anybody at this table upset about eliminating something.
Well, my concern would be that you should just say if it's a noise concern, a smell concern. A pollution concern, then it doesn't fit in itself because. Some of these uses. That when they're deployed could have that same problem.
But if we're going that broad. Then. How how do we narrow that to the point where it's not up to interpretation of every different person that sits in one of these?
It's a good question.
And is this going to replace our professional office, well?
Yeah, and you know, I'm happy to format it however you guys think if it's more based off of environmental type things. We do already have a noise ordinance. Um, but there could be additional. Regulations and issues, it's just the, the list of permitted, conditional, prohibited uses is kind of the standard. Way that cities regulate land uses. And there could be different or additional uses, the more detailed. Usually the better. We're really trying to, we're worried about certain things.
I mean, I I. Is this?
I would change some of the table.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on the table, but the table is just for discussion anyway, but i- is this going to be replacing? Uh, professional office space? So it's gonna be in addition to.
New color you can paint with.
So, a- are we, are we doing similar style restrictions in our other zones?
Unless you guys want it, we weren't planning on.
Well, no, I mean, are 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 we saying this type, this type of business is prohibited?
Every zone has a list of permitted and conditional uses.
But right now they're bullet points. This is our first. Our first venture into the table arena.
Typically, your your zoning districts are prescriptive so that. You're you're allowed the uses in the zone. If it's not on the list, can do.
There's usually a statement in front of the bullet list that says that these are the things that you can do and nothing else.
I actually.
Because what's permitted uses, if it's not a permitted use, then it's not permitted, yeah.
Yeah, so the the columns are just meant to to be discussion because I think we, I I imagine that we riddle it down. I took a stab at what might be permitted. I also. In the, in the setbacks and the allowed height and I like put really big setbacks. And then limited the height to a one story building if this, if the intent is to try to reduce impact to neighbors and. Most, most retail nowadays is the same as story. So, for its, uh. Commercial type use, it wouldn't be a problem.
Under, under a scenario like the mayor's talking, when you, you have permitted uses that everybody brings it good. And then everything else would just be conditional. Right, I guess that's reasonable, I mean, you're the, 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 the condition I'm talking. We should have to lay those out so that, you know, the, like, future planning commission would know what the guideline is, yeah.
I don't, the table is actually great.
Thor and Wayne.
Here's, well, Leighton has a spelling error.
They do.
Production.
Production.
Product.
It's production.
Yeah, I'm gonna blame them, obviously.
Yeah.
There, it's pretty, it's.
You gotta, you gotta double check. Gotta wash this guy. Um, I, I would say that I didn't see Jim on here anywhere. I wasn't sure if that was an athletic tennis or swim problem, or maybe I'm just.
I'm pretty sure.
No, there was a hall, that's a hall place.
Actually, that's.
Studio, it's in her studio, health, exercise, dance, music, drama, or cinema.
Yeah, but actually I disagree with the one that said pool because. I don't think, you know, we've had problems with pools in neighborhoods being a business because of, uh.
Are you rented by the hour?
Well, and people complained, so I think that if that's a complaint we've already dealt with, why would you put this next to a residence or? Residential area.
Well, the airport or in the heliport might be a little noisy.
I would agree with that as well. I don't know why they're in there.
Well, hold on, because you have pet service that is indoors and that will still get loud.
The airport in heliport is on the prohibited. It's assisted living, that's checked.
Oh.
Yeah, and, um. As far as.
Preschool, you guys don't get that loud? I had that something in the screen.
Yeah. Um, the only ones that I really thought needed to change was.
Those are most.
Um. Like truck and trailer rental, like is that a loud thing, like U-Haul?
I think it's too industrial for that.
Okay, I was just gonna talk about it. I I, same thing with, uh.
Please start the pool. I just, we already went through that with the.
He's great. I would love a pool in my neighborhood.
This is the type of dialogue I think we need.
But more clear is like.
Issue that we had continuing of the noise now lengths over and over and over. How is that gonna be different here?
That was, that was a pool in a residential.
But that was a, yeah, in a residential.
And this backs up to a residential.
So it's closed.
Okay, but if if you're, if you're in a commercial area next to a residential. I think it's okay if you have a purpose built pool. The problem there was they were a house with a pool in the back.
No parking.
And no parking.
Oh, that was happened, and I'm on the mayor's side, but that's why it might be reset rare, so pay attention. Be reset again, take out a note pad. I had a problem with before they closed that pool over here, uh, uh, was the rush, yeah, and it was indoors. And the people all around it complained because it was so loud, so. But we've already been down this road.
But.
In the same.
I agree.
But that was a noise ordinance there.
Yeah, but that's what you say, like some of this.
We're having trouble, we're having trouble with, of course, even noise ordinance as is. Why not just take this away from the problem?
I agree. I'm not, I'm sorry, me being the way about, I don't like.
I I think the pool next to residential is a bad idea.
To quote a friend of mine. Um, the day children's laughter is not, uh.
Hands on the.
An offensive thing in Syracuse.
If you notice.
I don't love children screaming at the top of their lungs in a high pitched tone all day long.
So, um, indoor commercial amusement, I put prohibited just because I know that that, what that has resulted, that would be the most. Direct match with what I would call rush. Indoor commercial amusement, but pool, where's, where's that at? On the first page?
No, it's, it's a three part. It's swim, no, it's, it's.
It'll start at full.
I was looking for something like.
What is?
Pool, it's like the third one, or swim is the third one. And I'm not okay with the other ones. I don't even remember what they were. I didn't know that the one I, that I didn't like was. I thought, we're gonna go down the swim pit and sting again.
Yeah, you guys tell me.
Wait a minute, a live theater, like.
That's inside.
Well. So, hold on now.
I should put numbers on.
At least alphabetize it.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not here for the outdoor one, this.
Outdoor against residential.
But for permitted, um, we have things like, I wonder why convenience store wasn't in the permitted use.
Is what?
Like a gas station? No, see, I I think a convenience store and a gas station are two different things.
I think the providing, like a seven eleven used to just be a convenience store, now they're adding the pumps back.
Yeah, but I I agree, a gas station is a blog in here, but a a place where you can just go buy something. Like, I I I would have.
No, no, I'm serious.
No, well. Okay.
So something like that.
Okay, I I guess I was thinking in, in Argentina. Um, there were little things called kiosks, which were just little, um, little shops that you could run to that had like.
Sure.
You know.
It's like the seven eleven without the gas pump.
Yeah, something like that. They're super handy, like that made my neighbor. They're super handy, like that made my neighbor look.
Like that's seven one.
You would wanna say convenience store without gas.
Convenience store without gas, and and heck, you can say without wi- with without vaping or without. Alcohol, something like that.
Yeah, there are restrictions on where where the smoke shops go, in fact. Yeah, I mean, they they have. The health department has regulations.
Would usually have like that little thing right up next.
I I'm just saying, I I thought convenience store, I was okay with um laboratory, medical or dental, like.
They make dental implants.
Make dental implants or people who make glasses or like that's the type of shop.
Are they are they loud? I guess what the. That's what I'm saying, I was okay with one of those.
That would be the same as like laboratories, science or.
Yeah, we have laboratories, they're all that's permitted, but this laboratory wasn't, so I wouldn't choose it. I have some people excited to open lawn permits, so we have some new apartments. And what is a snowshower? Why is that questionable? I love me a snowshower.
But it's they're all good discussions. Is there a list of property that we would be targeting for this?
Oh, yeah, right.
My net I know of one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, maybe you could assign them, I mean, I don't.
If you look at the.
Similar to that one, right.
If you look at the first paragraph of the zone, it kind of gives an indication of the context that we would be looking at. Purpose of this zone is to provide for a broad range of office, retail, commercial services. That are contextually appropriate to be located upon Archival Road with single-family residential on the side of there, so. South of Walmart, you have some properties that are on Archival Road with residential behind it. There's probably other places in the city where maybe it's the same.
But but not a town, is that, I mean.
I don't think we're gonna have a bed and breakfast or a hotel or motel.
You could see maybe the the properties across the street.
Although, anyway, that's different section. Of of what I want.
So the question for the council is, do you have some way of resettling this or? Are you in agreement with enough that we can move on or?
Options are talk about it again, or another meeting with some.
We don't wanna do that.
Or we send it to planning commission.
I won't be saying it's planning commission.
Okay, recommendation is goes to planning commission. Everybody's okay with that? Okay, let's move on. Recommendation proposed amendment to municipal code behind ten, chapter thirty, five three yards.
So this one has actually already been for planning commission. Um and this is out of a concern for properties that are wanting to be developed next to the freeway and. Apparently don't have any requirement for fencing, and so we worried about like truck tires and. I don't know if the stop of a wayward semi-truck or something, but at least it provides some protection. To people living next to the freeway. Um where especially where you got their policy, they won't provide a sound wall. If it comes after the freeway is built.
So that's.
Yes, I mean.
Just mean, kinda like the changes, and I think not only does it provide sound protection, but also, yeah, I I think. I I see enough cars on the.
It provides physical protection too, semi-trucks can come off that highway with all that, yeah.
Well, it even not just a semi-truck, I mean, I've seen plenty of cars down in the. Ravines on the sideline, last, every time after it snows, I'm amazed at how many mud tracks there are. What are you doing? That's not the road.
What are they securing their load, and it's like.
No, I'd love to see what other cities are doing on.
Uh some cities have it pretty standardized and it becomes almost like a branding app because it's pretty uniform, yeah?
Yeah.
And so this way we do, you're like, nice, so you don't have a hodgepodge of whatever kind of.
Makes sense, I agree with you, logical.
Good change.
I'm hearing support and the question, or the since this has already been to planning commission, this should go straight to our next approval. Are you okay with that?
Just needs a public hearing.
And we will have that public hearing. Since we can do it at that. All right, number six, recommendation of the plan, pressure proposed amendment for. Title ten pertaining to pedestrian access walkways.
Yeah, so we're trying to make our commercial areas as safe as possible for pedestrians, so. When they're crossing these dry aisles and parking lots, they don't get ran over, and we have a requirement that says you have to. Do a sidewalk to every front door, between the sidewalk and the road to the front door of the thing, but. It, the way it's worded right now, it just says like dissimilar material and so the developers like, so I'll just paint it, I did. Yeah, and so then like one season later, the paint's worn off and, you know, nobody knows where they're supposed to cross, and it's not safe. So we're just trying to standardize it so that it's the standard spec and it provides. So this would require that it's done in concrete, so even if. Yeah, okay, and so every time it, you know, over time, hopefully. Heaven forbid they forget to paint it, and hopefully they just stay up on the paint, but at least there'll be something there that still indicates it's crossing area.
I feel like anything that brings attention to crossing areas, especially. Oh my gosh, it's a big deal.
Hey, so we're all good with this one? All right, let's move on, sorry, mainly going to city council, the public hearing, yes, city council, the public hearing, thank you. Because we didn't do one of the planning commissions, but there's a reason to go back to planning commission. As long as we include a public hearing, we're fine. Uh proposed amendments to municipal code title five pertaining to door-to-door solicitation. Talk about where we landed with this one.
When we dealt with this massive rewrite of the door-to-door solicitation uh code earlier. You may recall that the final product was very difficult, very difficult, the changes were so voluminous, that you just couldn't find the changes with all the text. I indicated that night that maybe we should take a second look at things, in my spare time, I did go back and find a few errors. Notably, I've deleted a, I proposed to delete a few definitions that are not necessary, like the definition for submitted and writing. Basically means that something is submitted. Had a definition for that, and the penalty is someone who files an appeal, and I think that there were a couple of terms there that was didn't need to be defined. Um cleaned it up a little bit more, changed no solicitation sign and placard to no soliciting sign. Everywhere that that'll be, the only significant rewrite is the appeals section. And I didn't change anything as far as the process goes, I think I just made it more clear and easy to understand, and sort of a step-by-step thing. So this is my attempt to finally put door-to-door solicitation to rest, at least in my lifetime.
So as soon as they door-to-door solicit, you're one who solicits from door to door.
I like what you've done with it, Colin, there's maybe also any comment.
So, I guess, the only way this get, no, no one talks to the city. Uh I I, this week alone, I have three different people, no, only two, one, one of them with the same company twice. Um show up to my doors, uh wanting my house to be the. A model home for their windows, and they said the same thing to everybody they talked to, um but. I'm like, oh, have you registered for the city?
No.
Oh, did you know you're supposed to? Nope. Okay, well, um you have to, okay, thanks, we'll we'll take that in on our advisement, have a nice night.
And go to the next house.
Then go to the next house.
So.
Try and detain them.
So.
So I guess, how is this enforced? Like, am I supposed to call the police if someone is?
Yeah, they come out.
Okay, so here's the situation, we have a few people in the city. Who are continually calling and complaining about the fact that. When they call, they don't feel like anything can be done, which they'll do. I don't expect that we're gonna stop all these people who fail to apply, we we won't stop them, but. At least the police can do something about it, if we make a little bit of a change, and if they can. This is a community where the word does kind of circulate, I mean.
But can we put up, can we put up a sign that says, uh you know, right now we have no J breaks in the, or no, no. Whatever they call them, breaks in the city underneath, uh all swimmers are required to register with the city. Yeah, I mean, if you wanna come in here.
You need to know.
Here's the list.
So we don't slow nobody down now.
You know, I saw a movie once where they have a little music box you opened up, and the thing to is you enter the town.
Oh, yeah, with gates.
To report that since we messed with the store-to-door solicitation stuff the whole time. We have issued two citations at fifty bucks apiece and they paid, and we also issued one criminal, started one criminal case where the fellow knocked on the door. Refused to leave after he was told to leave, looked at my no soliciting sign, well, that's nice, I'm gonna talk to you anyway, so we turned out a criminal in that case as pending.
And all right, so we still get a fight?
We do have the authority to uh enforce against the actual person.
That's mostly company.
And the company, the company's the one that makes, if you can get to a company or two, that changes everything, because then. They understand that we care.
Yeah.
That's why I said you give these engine breaks tickets.
Um. See, I I guess, so I guess help me understand. Um if someone shows up and they have not registered for the city, can we put out something that says, here's what you should do, is it, is it, you know, send it away? Does that have their cards? They may, they're not gonna have to have any cards.
Here's the thing, in these huge events where people have turned them away at the door, but they've been offended or bothered, they call the police. These people are still in the neighborhood, they're going door to door, it's almost never that the police don't find them.
Yeah.
This just gives them the power to do something.
So so should I, at that point, you know, call the non-emergency number and say, hey, can you guys send someone over?
If it bothers you, if if you're not bothered by this, then you can choose to ignore it.
A lot of people snap pictures and post it on Facebook. The easiest way to get rid of someone, open the door, say, I rent, no, thank you, and close it, and they can't, that's it. They're gone, they can't see for after that, you have to be a homeowner, you know, just tell them that.
Okay, so I think this is a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
I don't think this solves everything, I don't know that we ever will solve everything with an ordinance, but. Think it's a step in the right direction.
I I I do think, let us put some information out that said, here's what you should do.
I agree with that, I think that's a good thing.
I think that would be helpful, I think.
I think you already have a flyer that makes. No, we just put it on social media. Yes, I'll have a flyer.
Is anyone object to putting this on the consent?
No, no.
Okay, then let's, we'll move this to consent. Uh number eight, proposed amendment since there's a code. Um establishing general land use application requirements. This has come up recently that we can't have conflicting applications. Because we can't act on one if another one is pending. So this seemed like a no-brainer, but you guys can comment if you have a proper challenge to it. Yeah.
At the risk of offending everyone at the table, I did discuss this with our attorney in the leisure bill's lawsuit. I sent it to him, I said, what do you think? He called me back and said, I think it's a bad idea, I don't recommend it, he and I disagree on that, but I did tell him that I would tell you why it is not recommended.
Tell me why.
He believes there is a First Amendment right for people to take their grievances to the government, and by limiting the time in which we can pick that. Saying you can't bring it now, we might be intervening on someone's First Amendment rights, which he thinks is a risk we should not take. Personally, interesting, I don't agree with it, but I told him I'd tell you an example.
I disagree, I agree with Colin, I think that it only makes sense that we can't. We can't be taking an action, how would we go back to legal action on a property? And the judge decides differently if we took a different action on that property.
If we have two land use applications for the same land.
Yeah.
What are we supposed to do if we approve them both, what happens?
One has to be resolved before you can take the next one up.
I don't think that's a.
I think that's logic.
I agree. It's like, we have, we have a queue.
Having a hard time understanding the concern.
I I by by that logic, all lines are a violation of the person in the right, because they can't all talk to a person in front of the line at the same time.
I feel like this is, okay. One of those states where they made out their mind, and then they changed their mind before they got the answer. And. But if we get the answer for the first decision, and they don't like it, they're like, well, we already changed our mind, and then they could change their mind again. Before we get them another answer.
I will be proceeding with this.
Okay, anybody else have an objection?
I'm not a lawyer, but I don't see a constitutional, I'll try to constitution here.
What would be an example when they choose?
I can give you one. That doesn't have anything to do with Syracuse, uh we did this ordinance in Tulare County, which is not why we should do it here, but here's the situation I feel comfortable talking about. Um there was a pe- a small piece of property that was zoned commercial. A fellow wanted to buy it and turn it into townhome, so he wanted to change the zoning to whatever ER, whatever that was in Tulare County. Um the Tulare County Commission's position was, we don't have very much commercial, we don't protect the commercial that we have, we're not very fond of this. The fellow, and the neighbors were like, yeah, we don't really want more townhomes in the neighborhood either. So the fellow said, well, if you're not gonna let me change it to that and do townhomes, it's already zoned commercial. I can put a hotel in there, I'm gonna bring in a four-story long stay, you know, I forget what they're called, are those? I'm gonna bring one of those extended stay hotels in. Neighbors really hated that, we had two applications pending, and it was like, if you don't approve this one, you're gonna get this. If you don't approve this one, then I can do what I wanted to do in the first place, and it forced the citizens and the council in a very difficult position. So we think we will let we adopt something very similar to this.
We did have.
I trust developers, man, I'll trust their work.
We had one a couple of years ago in Syracuse, and I can, I think this we will talk about. But behind the Karate Studio, we had an application to put in storage units. And somebody came in and said, I want to put in the application to put in townhomes, and the. Storage unit people said, well, we we think we're owed a decision before you can start talking to the second applicant. So we effectively did this, we said, okay, we're going to resolve the first one before we start taking up too much on the second one. We did actually start to hear them, and it, there was, there was concern that. Yeah, they brought in an attorney and said, is this even legal if you haven't acted on our application, so. That happened here, I think we did the same thing in the end, but it it made it very awkward.
To be the owner or under contract to put in an application, how did both of those get to put in an application at once?
Because you can have multiple offers on a property, and that's the difficulty.
That's right, I was under contract for.
I think it is now, but I think before we were letting anybody who had an offer in at the time.
We, on our application, it's required that the landowner signs it. When the landowner signs both of them, could sign both of them, or he could uh do an after-day.
So that would be the example, and I do think that this has a good logic to it, but.
The parking for the, you know, if there was enough parking, it would spot that.
Do you have a concern with it, Brad?
Uh no, I just haven't found it on my trip, but I, from what I'm hearing.
All right, so consent agenda? Okay, yep, so, so I'm going to strike E at the request of staff who feel like they need to revisit that one before we discuss it. So let's move on to F.
I'm sorry, do we need a public hearing on that because it is a land.
And it also has not been.
Oh, yeah.
Planning commission, so you wanna send it to planning, or do you wanna do it?
Going to, no, we're gonna.
Send it to planning commission.
But we are annual public hearing in the business.
Take that off the consent, right?
Yes. Yeah, yes, very good point. But we expect to have a pass uh planning commission before we get to see it the next week. And we're gonna have the time to do a public hearing. Okay, so fireworks is is needs to be reworked, so we're moving on to. Uh adequate staffing for safer land.
Well, uh just much like we did last year, playing for the safer grant, just wanted to. See how the council's position, we did not get the safer grant. So get the council's position to see if you're in favor of us.
So get the council's position to see if you're in favor of us moving forward with it again for this upcoming year. If they continue to do it.
Yes, we'd like to reply and hopefully we'll have someone to even help you private.
So I think all we needed was the nod from council that we're in support of.
That's all I needed.
We don't need to take an action on this one, but we're good. Creating a grant administrator employee convention for Syracuse. This, uh, comes down at a very awkward times considering today that all grants funds. Or federal grant funds are suddenly on hold, but I expect that.
There's a lot more than that.
I expect that to change. I don't expect that to be long lasting. The simple, the simple fact is I expect this position to pay for itself. Technically, the money that we save would allow us to start immediately with the, that as a backup. But my, my belief is that this position will pay for itself many times over. But how's everybody else feeling?
I agree. I, I feel like this is an important position.
I feel like as much time as our own staff that they currently have spends dealing with grants in their own different departments, this. In their time alone will make that. With the amount of money that we already spent for their time to do grants.
And the nice thing is with them, like they're, they're going to hear about a ton of grants. Rather than, it'd be nice for them to say, hey, I heard about this grant.
Yeah.
And have someone they can give it to rather than they try to remember that, you know, when they have an hour, three days from now to go back and look at that grant.
All good points. So we will move forward with this and put it on the next agenda for creation. Um, continued discussion of the city's mission and vision statements. Anybody have anything new on these that they would like before we put this to rest for the year?
So, um, we, uh, we have made some recommendations in one of our previous meetings to them, to those. I don't know if that incorporated.
So the, yeah, I think, I think a main point I want to make is I, I did hear those, those recommendations and I have my notes in my meeting. Um, what I would say is most of those are not for the next step. And they would fall under. Uh, these vision statements, like for example. Uh, one, one that you mentioned, yeah, one that you mentioned, say public works responding in a timely fashion to fix some issues. Um, that could go under the public works vision statements.
Yeah, okay, I, I meant vision statements in perfect.
Yeah, as a, as, as the next step, which is going to be. How, how, how do we define success to these visions, right? These key results. And, and I think the next step is to identify those things and then we can measure them.
And I think that's a bigger discussion that we will have in the next work session.
Yeah.
And we'll really break it down further.
Yeah, the purpose of, of today's discussion is to hopefully finalize the vision of what you want. Out of your departments and out of the city.
We're good. Hey. So we will move on to.
Need, sorry, mayor, this, this, this would be adopted, so we, we could put this on the next.
So we, we don't want to add those now?
Something in here that involved that includes safety in our statement. We have nothing that, that even references safety. That's kind of our aim, putting into the people focused sentence. Uh, we're feeling a vibrant, safe and sustainable.
Yeah, are you talking about the mission statement or?
Over all of it, yeah. I mean, there's nothing in your vision, safety, city service, nothing in your references, just the specific word of state.
Except for what is fire and what is police and what is.
Yeah, it's all, there's no safety, anything referenced. And right now, that's what people, the American dream has a lot more to do with safety and security.
I agree with that. How do you measure that? We, we want the citizens to feel safe.
We are.
You, you can measure it through like community surveys and see how the community responds. Do they feel safe? You know, a lot of, a lot of things in, in government are. The way you quantify them are by consensus. It's not really a black and white like math, but.
Quantify with people's qualitative statement.
Yeah. Um, you, that, that third, that third, uh, citywide vision statement. We foster a strong sense of community pride through improvements against.
These are the AI updated ones, right?
Uh, correct, in, in red. Um, we could say. We foster a strong sense of community pride and safety through improvements against and services.
Yeah, yeah. I just feel like we should reference safety in there somewhere because.
Right, and public safety.
Yeah, I mean, we have whole public safety units, so.
All right, let's add it to the, add that language. Any others? Hey, so let's move on to changing, uh, city code to Syracuse municipal code. This is really a legal plan. And it helps if we change all references to the same. Anybody have an issue with that?
Before we move on though, sorry, I thought we were going to talk about all the rest of vision statements. So I guess, Wendy, do you want to, want to address that, Brody? For the comments that me and Paul added last time?
So, so that, that would be the next step.
Okay, so we're, we're just okay with this one and then we're going to talk about these vision statements again.
We're going to prove these and in the next work session, we're going to see how do we accomplish them.
Yeah.
That's the steps that we had planned, or Brody's planned on.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you look on, in, on that memo, so the vision statements, they'll, they'll set sort of a. Qualitative aspiration of what we want to achieve. The next steps are the key performance indicators, which are measurable.
Which is a step we have.
So I guess for like CED, like there's nothing about, um. Economic growth in there. I feel like CED should have at least one vision statement about economic growth.
Kind of a thing, right?
I mean, we, we say, we have a strategy, we have, we have a strategic plan to support community and business development. But I would like to say, like, I want a one that says the CED is active in recruiting businesses to the community or something like that, promoting growth. I feel like, um, having a plan and actually. Be active in going to, like, you know, going out and seeking businesses and reaching out. I think those are two different things. I, I believe we need a plan.
And that.
But also we need, we need the personnel to enact that plan.
Yeah, and that's, and if that's the vision of the council for that department, then yeah.
I mean, I guess it's not their, if it's not their department, which department would it be?
I don't think that it's not their department. I think the question is, is we have the personnel and, and, and so the question is. I'm setting a new goal that we have to now hire for because. I, really, I've been filling in for a lot of that just because we haven't been able to afford more staff.
I'm just saying, I, I do think that we should be active in recruiting.
I, I do.
Yeah.
Okay, we do that. I, I think you do. I, I, I don't want to say that we don't do that. It's not clear that we do that. I, I've heard it's just the mayor.
Businesses that are looking to go somewhere, I usually tell Nella, let the donut place and stuff like that. He contacts them, see if they can do something.
So I, I think, I think we could add this without have, I, I do want this to be a specific goal that we are active in this community. Um, going out, making sure we're, we're talking to those people that are going to be bringing things, I think.
Yeah.
But, but that, but that was just, we have an effective strategy, strategic plan to do that. There's a difference between having a plan and actually doing it.
Between using the vision statement and the KPI, which would be the next step in February.
All right. See, you guys don't want to put that in. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm not saying that it needs to be out. I, I mean, it's something that's been in effect for three years now. I mean, it's been very active at it.
Okay, so why don't you create for it? The same, I, I would like to see a goal there that says we are active in recruiting business.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think you could fit it either way. So you could put it in your, in your key results and. Key performance indicators under that second statement of CED. Um, where we specifically have. Uh, goals on how much we reach out, right? Things like that, because, because that's part of effective communication with businesses. So it could fit under the next step, but if, if actively recruiting is the vision. Then you could put it in this document.
I, I think I would like that to be a vision.
You always agree? Yes, let's get along.
So I'll come up with some language to that and thank.
Any others?
I guess, I guess there's not much mention, um. I guess we talked about, or at least I brought up fiscal responsibility, focusing on that. So I guess the KPIs are measuring that without explicitly stating it or.
That's always been such an active part of our discussion. Do you not feel like it's represented in the vision statements?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, reference to, uh, efficiencies.
Fiscally responsible.
Um, and, and financial sustainability. Now, how you measure that would be the next step, right? So, so there's, people have different definitions of financial sustainability, right? Some people say you have to have no debt whatsoever. A lot of people say.
You gotta be able to pay.
You gotta be able to pay your debt, right? So, so, so this council and every council. Going forward has to define what that means.
Do, do we want to put anything in about, um, seeking outside investment and increasing efficiency in administration? Um, and we are adding a grant writer. I think one of the things I think are going to be administration is just. Um, one of the roles of administration is now that we have a grant, say, look, we are actively going out and take credit for it here. But we're going out looking for opportunities to bring additional revenue and it doesn't, it doesn't burden the tax, the taxpayer. And from city taxes.
And, and that one, I think again, could go either way. So you could, you could put it under the, the citywide vision statement that is, we are financially stable city. The balance is service quality and cost effectiveness. Um, part of being financially stable, we're going out and giving non tax funded money. Um, and so we could put it under there as the next, as we develop our KPIs. Or if that's the vision again.
I'm hearing we're getting too specific. We need to keep broad and then.
For this document.
Yeah, and then use KPIs to find you. I'm good.
So we established the KPIs, yeah, that works.
Which is intended in the, I mean, we've already talked about the prospective agendas in the staff meeting. And the intent was that this next one would go into a new level of how to. Probably beyond what we've ever done before. And that was the intent of February's discussion.
Works.
All right. Review ma- um, mayor, council, staff assignments.
We, yeah, we need to do the Syracuse municipal code one.
Does anybody know a problem with that one?
Yeah, I feel like our city's large enough now that it also should say that.
Yeah.
No longer.
I think details matter.
Okay.
And so I think this is a good change to make sure it's clear.
All right, so moving on, staff assignments. Does anybody have any particular concern or need to change assignments from? I mean, we usually look into them quite a bit every other year when we change council members.
I was surprised to see this on here.
Well, technically it needs, you know, you need to have the opportunity. That's. If, if you wanted to bring it up, that's why I put it on the agenda, to make sure that we have that chance. We'll go forward then. All right. Uh, with that, we are concluded and we are adjourned in one hour.
That took way less.